Good morning, welcome everybody to a special meeting for Police and Fire Commission. This morning, we're gonna have a presentation by Mr. Wolfren.
Alright, we said?
Yep.
Alright, well, usually these last couple of I've done and kind of stood around and that's normal for me to.
Yeah.
But it's such a small group, so it kinda seems weird too. Just some background, the reason why we're doing this. You know, first of all, it's kind of been determined, maybe not a great job of some orientation when folks take up positions as public officials, so that's part of it. But also, just to talk a little bit, some of you guys have had the experience of working with me and my role, but that was another part of that, it's just to kind of discuss that in parameters and what my, what my job is in terms of interacting with new folks. So, as general counsel for the city, I'm accessible, I'm supposed to provide advice to public officials, so I am accessible to you. But one of the complications with that is sort of how the city runs and, you know, part of that is, I always try to explain it that, well, like a corporation, the council would be like the board of directors and they appoint other bodies to act as divisions of that board of directors. And so, it's sort of filters through that way. And obviously, we have to follow various rules, which we can get into some of those anyway. But the reason why I describe it that way is, really, it relates to my job. It's, it's difficult, because as you can imagine, we oftentimes have different political positions, different political objectives by various members, and they could be on the same body. So I'm gonna use the common council, but it applies to this body as well, and that is where one person thinks something should happen and another person thinks it differently, whether that's a purchase, or a policy, or whatever it might be. And so, both of those individuals may call me for legal advice as to whether something could happen, or is there some way they can quash something that's going to happen? And so, I have to play that role, where I'm giving legal advice to two different individuals that have a different objective. So, I'm allowed to do that, but I need to maintain some neutrality so people trust me, and I try to do that. But the other part of it is, normally when you interact with a lawyer, there is a duty of confidentiality that applies. And that's something that I'm duty-bound under ethics as a lawyer, so that if I mess that up, I can lose my license if I don't treat that properly. So normally, when you call up a lawyer and you tell him something, that's absolutely every aspect of it, including whether you contacted them, is confidential. So if, and we get this quite frequently, actually, we'll get a call at the office and it'll be like, "Do you represent so-and-so?" And I have, you know, had to caution my staff, and even the other lawyers in my office at times, "You can't even say that? You're disclosing whether somebody's a client unless, you know, that's in the context of the representation or in their interest, you don't even do that." And so, there's this absolute strict duty of confidentiality. But here's where that becomes complicated in this situation. So if a member of the body calls up and talks to me, the one problem is that, that because we are dealing with this like in a corporate setting, my ultimate duty is to the corporation itself, the city of Marshall. Referring to it that way, we are actually a municipal corporation. So, if you were to call me up and tell me, "You know, I've been stealing money out of the petty cash for the last six years, and I think they might be finding out about it, so I'd like to throw away the receipts." As soon as that happens, now I have a higher duty to the organization to protect it, okay? And so, what I'm getting at here is, there may be times where you would call me, and we could have a problem that I can't provide you an absolute confidentiality, because of the nature of the discussion, such that it puts a risk on the corporation overall. Those things are rare, but they can happen, and they do, you know, we've had a lot of political things happen in the last few years here. And there are times where that discussion is held, that, "Are you acting in the best interest as a member of the governing body in carrying out your duties?" So, let's say that there's personal animus between, you know, members of a body, and they want to get somebody in trouble, and they're looking at ways to do that. Just doing that for that purpose misses the fiduciary duty that the officer might have to the corporation. Sometimes, that requires me to kind of put that on track and say, "Can you do what you're doing? Yes. Can you do what you're doing legally?" The question is, should you be doing it in terms of the duty that you have to the overall organization? So those things kind of come into play. Usually, you know, on these phone calls, I can try to catch these things happening, but that's one of the benefits to having this discussion, which we now almost have with everybody, just so that there's an understanding of what that duty of confidentiality is, so that people don't think they can just tell me anything, and it remains confidential. So, anybody got questions on that, just in terms of, it's a little bit different of a concept there?
So, the question I have is, let's say we have a question about anything, you know, "Do, do we have to contact the city administrator to get permission to visit with you? Or can, do we do that direct? Because in the past, there was some conversation about saying, 'Well, there needs to be a gatekeeper to your time.'"
You know, they may, they may, they may have done that policy-wise, but I don't think that that actually applies. We don't, I mean, as far as I know, we don't have an ongoing problem with that.
Okay.
So, I guess my view is, I don't, if there is a rule that says that you're supposed to be doing it that way, I don't know it. You may have been advised that, because we were running through a lot of legal bills or something at one point, I don't know. But to, to my knowledge, that's not the case, and in fact, the statute basically does require that I give advice to various public officials.
That's all, that's all I question.
Now, one of the other things that I have here, some just general things, you guys have been doing this a long time. I, I know some of you are very familiar with rules of order, you're governed by that, I mean, and that stuff's pretty straightforward, and you're such a small body that most of the time, you know, you're not gonna run into problems there. I mean, you know, Robert's Rules are really designed to allow large organizations, large to meet efficiently, carry out some order in order to get things done. The one thing that I know we've talked about that happens in a lot of the bodies is just to avoid making negative motions. In other words, somebody moving that we don't take particular action. If, if, if there's something there to decide whether you're going to approve a contract, for example, you don't have to, "I move that we not approve the contract." All you need to do is just, if the matter's before you and you don't do anything, it's not approved, so you don't have to do that. We get ourselves into trouble when we negatively do something, because then it appears as though you've literally decided you're never going to do it. So if something comes back, you've already decided, "I move that we're not going to approve the contract for the water tanker truck." Then, it's because there's something wrong with that contract, and you want to look at it again. You've actually already moved, you're not going to do that contract at all, so you're now back into sort of undoing stuff that you've already done, if you have to look at it, at it again. There's other problems with negative motion, it should seem obvious. I don't know.
So, just to be clear on that point, instead of not having the motion to not approve, you just have a vote, and when it fails, then you just move on?
Then, you've, you've denied it right there, right?
Yeah, so that way, if it comes, if it comes back.
There's other reasons why a negative motion becomes a problem, because you've, you've affirmatively taken action to take no action, and so that becomes confusing, could we ever talk about it again, and those sorts of things. So, that's...
What's the most elegant way to do that, just table it?
No, I, I mean, so, again, the real issue is, we, you know, think of that, I, if somebody moves to approve the purchase of a new tanker truck, and the vote's taken and nothing happened, okay? Then that's fine. If, if you, if you're one of those members that doesn't want to approve it, when the matter's in front of you, you don't move to do anything. You don't have to move, I, I, you know, we move to take no action, you don't have to do that. By, by not moving at all, you're taking no action.
Okay.
That's the distinction.
Okay.
And if you want to vote against it, you can. If the thing fails, you don't have to go back. So let's say that, you know, if somebody votes, moves to approve the tanker purchase, it fails, nobody needs to make a new motion to say, "I move that we refuse the, or deny the tanker purchase." You don't have to do that. You, you've not approved it by the failed motion, so it's really over. It becomes much more confusing if you take negative actions.
Can that item come back up for a little later?
Sure, yeah, yeah, always, I mean, that's Robert's Rules.
Or even before there's a motion to approve or disprove, should we ensure that we're asked, allotting people opportunity to ask questions before any motion's made?
You know, actually...
Ensure that motion's not made, and if it needs to be tabled, brought to another meeting, because we might need a little tidbit of more information as a whole body versus two or three of us agreeing or disagreeing, is that better?
It, it, it's better than making a negative motion, for sure. So, but if you, so, so that's one of the points that came up, is just simply, you know, if something's in front of you, someone should make a motion to approve it or deny it, or whatever it might be, right? And then, you have your discussion on it after the fact. If somebody, if you were looking at it and you said, "Boy, we don't have enough information for this," somebody could make the mo- motion to table it until the next meeting, that would be fine.
Even though there's been a motion made to approve it?
If that's been made first, then you can discuss that first, and, and you can override that by somebody making the motion to approve it, but you will, I, you know, I'd like to, you know, add to that, that we table it before we approve it, and this is why. So you have a discussion in regard to that. The main thing is, normally, unless something's on your agenda just for discussion, and I haven't gone through your agendas, no, but unless something's on or listed just for discussion purposes, normally, when the item comes up on the agenda, somebody would be making a motion to do something with it typically. So if you follow your agenda, you should be there. The other thing is, you're a small group, okay? So, you know, most of the formalities that you run into when you start getting into larger, you know, groups, like the common council's ten members, you can, you know, it's up to the body's chair as to how deep in that formality you need to go, okay? So, one of those weird things is that, under Robert's, right, if you're in the chair, and an item comes up and you want to speak on it, you are supposed to relinquish the chair if you're going to be addressing it. Now, I doubt whether you do that, I doubt whether that comes up here, but it is, you know, in terms of procedure, proper. Someone could call, you know, you know, to order that, you know, as a point of order, that, "Well, you're speaking on this as chair, and you shouldn't be doing that without relinquishing the gavel." The reason is, when you're doing that, you control it, so nobody tells you how long you can talk, or, you know, who's going to be called next. If you have a personal interest, and I say personal interest, but if you have an interest in it, and you're gonna be addressing it, the idea is, you shouldn't be deciding who's gonna talk next and everything else, if you're gonna participate. Now, alright, while those are the rules, alright, unless somebody calls point of order when you're doing that, because you're in such a small group here, it's not necessary that you do it. Is it proper? Yes, but if that, you know, if every action you take would now be objectionable, because you didn't do that, the people that could object would be the members of this body.
What about a motion to reconsider?
Yeah. A motion to reconsider really only happens in the meeting itself. So that's, you know, we, we talked about it, we think about that, and, but in terms of Robert's Rules, a motion to reconsider really only happens when it's happening in that meeting, okay? So after that, and so let's say that you take a motion on the tanker truck. Somebody makes a motion, and you discuss the tanker truck, and it fails, you could bring a motion to reconsider, as long as you're doing that within that same meeting. After that, nothing stops you, so let's use that example. You vote on the tanker truck, and it fails. And I am going to look at just, you have to be in the group that prevailed in order to make a motion to reconsider, okay? So, so if you were a member that voted no on the tanker truck motion, and then you wanted to reconsider it, you could bring a motion in that same meeting to reconsider it, have a new vote. But you have to be in that group that prevailed on the motion, because now we know what's gonna change, right? That really, the purpose of that is sort of economy of time, right? Because if you were, if you were a member of the body who was on the side that failed on that motion, if you could just bring a motion to reconsider all the time, you could just delay the meeting forever, because you just keep bringing motions to reconsider when you don't get your way, right? But what allows you to do it under Robert's Rules is that you are on the side that prevailed, so you can make a motion to reconsider. Now, if the vote fails, and you, let's say, even bring a motion to reconsider, and that fails, nothing stops you from readdressing this at the next meeting. So, it's really, the idea of reconsideration is happening within the same meeting.
Have I, when I have one thing, just to address Commissioner Meeks' question, if you had an agenda item, and you're just not comfortable, you have the knowledge, you're not really sure where you want to take this action item, you could make the motion to approve that purchase of that tanker truck, have the discussion. As the person making that motion, you can still vote against that motion when it comes time to vote. You should not speak against that motion during discussion, but you could still vote negatively against it. So if you didn't feel you had that information, you wanted that discussion, that's one way you could move forward also.
Yeah, and, and again, so, you know, that same scenario, one option would be to table it, because you don't have that information as well. So there's a lot of different ways that that can be accomplished, and, again, the body kind of controls that procedurally. Now, I don't know, do you guys have public comment in your meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. So, one of the things to watch out for is that if you have public comment, sometimes that can be negative. And there's just such a compelling urge to address that then, if somebody comes up and says, you know, "You guys screwed up that tanker purchase," and you want to be like, "Well, you know, why do you feel that way?" Or, "Here's why we did it," or "We got a new one coming down the pike." The problem is, that's not on the agenda, and so you can't address it. So when you have public comment, you have to refrain from making any comments related to that whatsoever. Now, most of the bodies, and I'm assuming you folks do, have an item on your agenda that talks about items for future agendas. And so if you had somebody come up on public comment and say something, and now you're not able to address it, at the end of the meeting, when items for future agendas come up, you wouldn't be able to say, "I move that we address so-and-so's discussion here today," whatever that public comment is. And then you can get it on agenda for the next time. Again, the whole reason is, it's a violation of open meetings law for you to have a discussion item that wasn't on the agenda, and if you addressed something in public comment that you didn't know about, wasn't on the agenda, then that's a problem. Now, somebody might come and say, "I see that you got the new tanker truck item on the agenda, and I think you shouldn't do it." Well, you're gonna be addressing that item in the meeting later, so you have your opportunity to do it there. Really, even though you have it on the agenda to talk about later, it's better for you not to address that public comment immediately there. It would be reasonable for you to say, "Well, it's on the agenda tonight," or whatever. But the real reason, again, is because you've got your agenda, that's going out to the public, they see what you're gonna discuss in an order, right? And if you take it out of order, it's just, there's an argument that it's not fair to the public, that they didn't know, by missing public comment, they're gonna miss the discussion or explanation that you have on that particular item.
Yeah, we don't have anything stated underneath our public comment about length of time. Should we be specifying, "Public comment is limited to five minutes per person, three minutes per person"?
That's up to your body. So, so, first of all, you don't have to allow any public comment, so you could choose, but you should probably pre-notice that, if you're not going to have a public comment, or definitely not have it on the agenda. But once you do have it, then the body has control over that, and it's my advice, that if you're gonna limit it, that you create a rule that that's what you're doing. The reason is just simply, you get yourself into trouble if you don't say it, but then something's coming up, and you say, "I'm only gonna give this person five minutes, but I gave last week's a whole bunch." Let's say, though, that you got something that is of particular concern, and you got multiple public comments, if you were at that meeting to say, you know, when you opened that meeting, say, "Well, now it's public comment time, but I, but because of the number of people speaking here, we're gonna limit it to five minutes," that's okay too. But that's truly a rule that can be levied by the chair to be able to do that. So you've got flexibility in regard to that, but it's just for, you know, I guess PR reasons, it's better if you're gonna do that, that you kind of adhere to that. I, I know we do that at the common council pretty strictly, basically, you know, literally she's got a timer there that she uses, and as much as that seems like, "Well, why are we doing it?", it's just fairness, so that we know, everybody's only gonna give five minutes, and it's gonna be, you know, one time, something else. But you have control over that, how you want to do it. The, the other thing is, and you guys probably don't really run into this, how, how does the agenda get set for you guys? Who, who decides what goes on in an agenda?
The chair.
The chair. The administrator?
Well, right now, Lori sets me a, a pre-draft, and then I go through it, and then tell her to go ahead.
So I want to talk a little bit about this item for future, items for future agendas, item on the agenda, and that's been something that's kind of evolved in many years now, really. And that was something, you know, Steve and I had talked about for the council, for various reasons, but what I've explained is, the real way that I intended that to be used, and what we had in the past, was there was always kind of a fight over who could put something on the agenda, right? So if you get, and I'm gonna talk about it in terms of common council, but, you know, this would apply here, again, knowing that you have less friction here, because you have fewer members, right? But I'm not assuming everybody gets along, that's could be, you know, that's, that's flexible, right? You could have that now, you might have a change, or whatever it might be, or people might be, you know, not happy about it. But what was happening is that you'd get, you know, a council member saying, "I want this on an agenda." And, you know, the, the code doesn't allow one council member to decide what goes on an agenda, and it was really structured for allowing, if I recall, I think it was Mayor that set the agenda. But the problem was that, if somebody wanted to be politically motivated, if you control the agenda, you control the outcome, right? So, go back to that tanker truck. If, if one person here, right, let's just say the chair, can control the agenda. If you didn't want that tanker truck on the agenda, and you didn't put it on the agenda, well, then no vote would ever be taken on it. So if you could literally control that agenda, you could stop the item from ever being discussed. So part of using this item for future agendas was intended to allow a minority group to get something on an agenda if they wanted to, or at least be discuss whether it should be on the agenda. So, while you, you may not, in this small group, ever have to deal with this, what, what you should think about is how that would work. If somebody was to say, "I would like to purchase the new tanker truck to be put back on the agenda," and at the items for future agendas, somebody could say, "Well, I don't think it should be on there." Then what would happen is, you could put on the agenda, and you should put on the next agenda, whether or not you will have a discussion over the tanker truck as an item for the next agenda. You see what I mean? So you can literally put a discussion over whether something's gonna be on the agenda on a future agenda, so you can get into that by decision by the body. At least then, there's been a vote to decide that, and it doesn't allow either, you know, one single member, because they control the agenda to decide it, or necessarily for the majority to completely close off the opportunity, at least for discussion on an item, merely based on the number of people. So if you think how that would look, somebody says, "I want the tanker truck purchase to be put on the agenda," and somebody says, "I don't think it should be on there," and then, what should happen is that the next agenda would evolve, are we going to put on a future agenda the discussion about the tanker truck purchase? And at least then, on the next agenda, there's a discussion. I think it should be on, because of this, this, and this, and it allows a discussion, it allows public disclosure of those issues, allows a discussion, it allows public disclosure of those issues, but it also allows the majority to say, "No, we're not going to." Now, the next question is, well, why the heck not just vote on it? What's wrong with that? Here's the problem. And this is, again, I've had to deal with a lot of weird stuff over the years. Somebody could, right, put something on the agenda that you don't really want to vote on. You don't even want a record that you voted on it, and having a discussion over whether it should be on the agenda is a better approach than actually discussing the item. And an example would be, somebody could say, "I move that the next agenda, we should vote on whether or not we should put the Nazi flag at the back of the room when we're having our meetings," right? So everybody could say, "We, that's never, we don't ever want to have to have that, that we all agree that that shouldn't, there's only one member, but at least it allows the avenue for a discussion, an open discussion over whether it goes on the agenda, rather than a full discussion that would involve disclosure of Nazi flags and all of those kinds of things." So there are some times where something has been, and probably more practical than the Nazi flag, is, what I've seen is, the same item's come back 13 times, right? And everybody's pretty fed up with it, and rather than having the discussion over the item again, and the presentation, it's just simply, we're gonna discuss whether there's gonna be a vote on whether it should be on the agenda at all. And when you do that, there can be a limitation on that level of discussion, right? So remember, the chair can, can decide when information is within the scope of the item that's being discussed. So if, again, I'll use the Nazi flag, if the decision is, or the discussion is, this discussion is about whether we're putting this on the agenda, so a presentation of the history of Nazi flags isn't necessary for that, you can cut that off, and that's the difference when you get, get by having that item on, as opposed to a motion for putting the Nazi flag on. Alright, so, one of the other things is, and, you know, I've worked here for a long, long time with the city, and we have great staff, they're extremely accessible, and at times, maybe even too accessible. So, one thing to always remember, that you, as a single member of the body, whether you are the chair or not, only are a, a public official in your own individual capacity, unless you're taking action that either has been authorized by the body, or is a collective action of the body. And the reason why I'm saying that is because we definitely, throughout the city, various positions of public officials, you know, think that by coming in, they could tell the staff, "I want this piece of information, and I, I'm entitled to it." You, as an individual member, even if you're the chair, do not really have any authority to tell, you know, and you're dealing with the fire department, or whatever, that, "Hey, I want this particular piece of information." You might get it, they work with you, but you don't have the ability to command them around or do something individually, unless the body's been authorized. So I'm gonna use this as an example, right? And here's where this comes up and becomes an issue, is that, you know, some public official says, "I want to go and look at the clerk's employment file, and see whether she's ever had any complaints against her." Acting as an individual, they really have no authorization to look at that, to ask for it, and push people around, literally, because of their position on the council, to ask for it. I'm using the council as a simple example, but you guys are in a position where this body's, you know, the, you know, primary role is discipline and, and employment of these individuals, and so you have to decide what your policy would be in regard to that. But what I am saying is that, outside the authority of the body granting a particular member the authority to ask for those records, you just don't have the authority to do it. So, what happens is, and it certainly occurs regularly in other bodies, is that somebody, you know, comes in and starts pushing around a staff member, looking for information, asking for them to make copies of thousands of documents and things like that. And that's, that's a problem, although it is often complied with anyway, right? So they cooperate and work with somebody, but we have to be careful, because I've seen that, you know, in, you know, over the years in particular, where it's been abused and is unfair, and, you know, I'll use as an example, even though a council member, as a single individual, has no control over anybody, people know that, you know, they are still ultimately presiding over their job, so when they say, you know, "I, I want you to go and dig up every email," or something like that on a particular topic, that becomes something where a staff member feels very compelled to go ahead and give them the information, even though they probably shouldn't be doing that, and they're wasting staff time. That's another example of where that happens, and why we shouldn't allow it, is that, you know, if somebody's got an agenda, and when I say agenda, an idea, they want something to go in a particular way, they could dig around and waste a lot of public resources looking to fulfill their particular idea of how they want something to go, even though, at the end of all of that, it's never gonna go anywhere, because the collective body isn't going to allow it to happen. But really, the point here is, you, as an individual, even if you're the chair, really have no specific authority to demand or ask for anything, unless the body's taken the action to allow you to do that. So, here's an example of that. You guys in a meeting could say that we are going to ask, or literally vote, that Randy should gather up information for the police chief regarding how many fire calls or whatever are done for a particular reason. Now, Randy has the authority through the body to go ahead and do this one particular thing, or carry out a task on behalf of the body. Another great example of that is, we think that a letter of commendation to the city of Stevens Point about how well they fought... about how well they fought the fire last week or whatever should be issued by the police and fire commission. While your body collectively, which you could assign, okay, we're going to have Steve Meade write that letter on behalf of them. So you're authorized to write now as the authority on behalf of the body. Because otherwise you couldn't do it, right? You couldn't write that letter saying, hey, Stevens Point, you did a great job on the fire. When you're doing that, you're only that individual at that point. Where this gets tricky, when you step into office, and most of you guys have been doing this now for a long time, but, you know, people don't understand the difference between their individual capacity and their public official capacity. And what ends up happening sometimes is we get people who engage in social media posts or whatnot. And the question is, well, did Bill Pankers say that as a, as the police and fire commission, right? So when you, again, I don't even know if I'm using that as an example, but all of a sudden a social media post comes up and says, you know, I really think that the police department did a terrible job last night doing something. Are you talking about that as Bill Panker or are you talking about that as the police and fire commission? If you're doing it as your, in your individual capacity, you haven't been authorized by anybody on this body to speak on their behalf, even though it might look like you're speaking for the police and fire commission, you're not, haven't been authorized to do it. We get into trouble when people don't see that and maybe overstep it and say things along the lines, as a member of the police and fire commission, I think this. And now, all right, you're still talking individually, but it starts to get, you know, perceived as something different and you get into trouble. And, you know, you can imagine going back to that whole thing where I'm, I'm acting on behalf of the corporation. I get complaints about that then, right? So and so posted on social media that, whatever, and it's, and we need to do something about it. And it's like, well, wait a minute, he or she didn't say that, you know, she was talking as a council member. You know, was it something that's divisive? Sure. But she, or he has a right to say whatever they want publicly as an individual. And they just happen to be a member of that body. But it's one of those things where depending on what's being said, you as a member of the body might feel uncomfortable with what's being done. So that's something to always keep in mind, that you've got that dual role with anything that you're doing. And that goes back to the whole idea that you can't act on behalf of the body, speak on behalf of the body, unless you've been actually authorized on behalf of the body. And to do so would be really overstepping your authority. So writing a social media post that says that the police and fire commission thinks that was a terrible job, well, you don't really have the authority to say that. And you cross that line if you make that representation.
That's something that I've learned across, you know how much citizen comment I do.
Okay.
And when I was in the planning commission and also here, I made it very clear that I am speaking from a perspective that citizens do not assume any other perspective.
Yeah, no, and that disclaimer is, is great. And as you know, in that capacity, you know, when you're speaking there, you know, I've never even heard that come up that way, right? Like you're not, it doesn't even cross in. It's those posts that become very difficult because, you know, somebody sees it. And I think one of the things, it's one of the problems with social media and some of the other forms of media, you know, we, we get kind of laughs in how we do it and then it becomes blurred in terms of where you're talking about this as a member of the police and fire commission. And then people don't understand that difference. I can sit here and tell you, and you guys, because you know you have to vote on things and understand, my vote is just a vote. You understand, the citizen that sees you speaking as a police and fire commission member, they don't hear that disclaimer or understand that distinction, then they think you just spoke as a police and fire commission member, remember? And/or the whole body. So that's great, I think, I think you're right. I've never seen that as an issue for you.
With what we've been talking about here, a number of times you mentioned policy, it needs to be this way. Should we, as an independent commission, have bylaws?
That's up to you. It really is up to this body, all right? I, I mean, so what you're really talking about is things like that, speaking on policy, acting, you know, certainly could do that. I think it's a decision by the body. And I think that the need for it is really dependent on whether you see that happening and to what extent there needs to be control. And, you know, the fact that you are asking that question today doesn't mean that that's the answer tomorrow. Because a lot of that goes back to the same reason we have Brock's rules, right? It, it goes back to the fact that the closer tied you guys are and you have a small group, it's less likely that you got someone running around doing something rogue. Bylaws sew that up so that you don't have those things happen. And I'm going to tell you, you know, I do this work in multiple municipalities. And I, I have seen this, you know, particularly since the political environment that we got ourselves in the last, you know, four years or so, entirely destroy the functionality of an entire municipality. Because you have one or two members that came in with a politic agenda and were allowed to really bog down that or made things so pressurized that people didn't want to stand up. And talking about, without any question, they have damaged the entire municipality. Cost them tremendous amounts of money, created terrible, terrible public distrust, enough that I, I removed myself as general counsel, saying I would not represent them. And that's one of those things, when you ask about a bylaw, well, bylaw might help you if there was something like that happening where you've got one person that's running rogue or doing something and you, you want to make it clear that, you know, there's certain parameters that would apply, talking about policy and those kinds of things. But whether you need that or not is really up to the body. And I don't, and, you know, if you ever talk to me in my capacity as legal counsel, I will make it very clear, I don't get a right to a political, and that walked out the door soon as I'm in this capacity. And I don't make economic decisions or policy decisions, so much so that it's probably frustrating at times, looking for decisions. But even if they're decisions about whether something looks good economically, that's a political decision, right? My view of what might be a good deal or too much money or not enough money, those things start to be decisions that don't rest with me legally. And so that's the reason why I don't have an answer for you, what I think you should do in terms of bylaws. I think the body needs to look at, is there a problem? Do we need to fix it? And is that, you know, the vehicle by which to do it? And that may very well be, and, and there may be some use, but every time that you do those things, every policy that you make needs to be thought through because they sometimes have different ramifications you cannot expect, right? I mean, you want people to feel like they can communicate freely and, and various things that can be affected by having those things in place.
Item for future agendas.
Sure, I think that is, yeah, yeah. But only if you decide. All right, well, so the other one is, and, and, you know, this, this body had to deal with some of this a few years ago. And that's just generally the open meetings law. And I think everybody understands how that goes. You can only speak about the things that are on the agenda. The things to watch for though are negative forums and walking forums, right? So a negative forum is a forum where it may not be enough to have voted an item, right? But it's enough to block an item. So you, this group is a body of four?
Five.
Five, okay. So, all right, so you need three to get something passed, all right? But there might be, then they have budget, same kind of budget consideration? No. So what, what we're talking about, and I'm going to use the common council, it's easier for me to do than that. We need certain, we need a super majority to take certain action. And that's like budget resolutions, right? The change of budget. So where it would normally take six members to be able to pass something, then a walking or a regular forum would be six members of that body to be able to make a decision, right? However, if you're talking about a, you know, change in the budget, excuse me, then a negative forum can be created as long as you have enough members that would block that decision. And that's what a negative forum is about. So, and when that, you know, when it's happening, you have to be talking about the specific thing. Because obviously, you know, it depends on what you're talking about, whether you need a negative, whether you need a super majority or not. But that's the concept of it. It's not just, was there enough people together that would form a forum? But in certain circumstances, and I, I'll fall back on that in discussion about the council, if you had a budgetary item and enough members, you know, got together to block it, then that actually is a negative forum and it would be a violation of open meetings law to, for that number of persons to sit down and have a discussion. So four, right, would be a negative forum. Whereas normally that wouldn't be the case, right? It would, it would have to take five to have a, a forum to stop something. And a walking forum is, is, and that's, you know, we've had a lot of discussion actually about this over the years, which is, a walking forum is where there's a meeting, even though you didn't actually have the group get together and sit down and decide something. So if you've got a members of five, it only takes three of you to really have a discussion over an item. And so that can happen in different ways. You guys could all meet over at Brown's and have a discussion about what you think about the tanker truck. That would be a violation of open meetings law. But it would also be a violation for, you know, for example, one member to send an email to another member and say, I really don't like this tanker truck and we should make sure that we can get enough of us to stop this from happening. And so that email is then forwarded on to another person who says, I agree with you guys, so I'll vote along with you. Once you've reached that tacit agreement to decide a matter, even though you didn't all do it together, but you've chain mailed it so that a decision is being made, that is a walking forum and it would be a violation of open meetings law. Now, I hesitate to say this because I don't, I, I would always recommend against it, okay? So what I'm saying, it's best for you not to put yourself in that position, all right? It's just dangerous and we don't need claims to be levied. The biggest problem with this stuff isn't whether or not you can defeat it. The damage is already done. If it appears that something like that happened and we can all say, well, we got out of it. No, because you've damaged the public trust if it looks like that's happened. So if we chain mail a bunch of emails together that you're talking about whether you're going to fire the police chief, even though I can say, well, they didn't actually decide it, they only were saying, what did everybody feel? Then that's a problem. Here's why I'm telling you that. There's a case law, there's a case out there that basically says, it's okay to count votes, right? Meaning that Bill could call each one of you up and find out how you're going to vote on an item and that's not a violation of the open meetings law, all right? Remember though, if that email got passed around out in the public, everybody's going to say that you, that you did something wrong. And it'll take this legal discussion or why that isn't a problem. But basically what it said is there's nothing illegal under the open meetings law to count votes. What's illegal is to make a decision or to discuss an item and decide what might be happening. And that does include not voting necessarily or saying how you're going to vote, but even the discussion. So if you, let's go back to that email example. And the email is passed around by three of you saying, how do you feel about that tanker truck? Well, I don't like it, I think it's, oh, I think they're great, they're very shiny. You have that discussion, three of you have engaged in a discussion over an item that might be on an agenda or is a topic that is obviously going to be in front of this body. Then you violated the open meeting law, even though you didn't vote on it. That's the problem. On the other hand, if it was just one member who says, hey, I'm just checking to see, how are you going to vote on that? All right? And that's done chain mail. I think it would be hugely risky if this was done by a blanket email by all of you. Then even if we were to say, well, all that was discussed was how was each person going to vote? And man, that is, you know, literally what you do in this meeting. So I've never seen a case to say that. That to me is different than what you consider vote counting. Vote counting is literally a person saying, how are you going to vote? 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 Saying, how are all of us going to vote? You're voting. I mean, I would be very wary of that. But in any event, that's something to watch out for because you have, you literally can walk into a meeting without expecting to do that. And it can happen by nothing more than one email being passed around amongst each of you with a response. And it can happen inadvertently so that if, if Bill, for example, said, what do you think of the tanker truck? And sends it off and then you reply to it, but everybody's in on it. Once you have enough where everybody's seeing, all right? Three people are saying what they feel about it. You've had a meeting that discussed a topic. So that's something we want to avoid. And it isn't, again, whether we can defend on it, right? I mean, I can get creative. But it's the damage that gets done by the allegation that it happened and then, you know, the, the kind of thing that we're staring in the face. And we, you know, one of the things that, with this body that I will say, that's different than every other body, is you are dealing with a specialized workforce group that we need to make sure maintains credibility in this community. And law enforcement is the most considered, but the fire is, is very similar. They're dealing with people's lives, they're being led into homes, all of that kind of stuff. But in particularly law enforcement and in the current political environment, how you guys operate affects that and the confidence of the public in the police itself. It's very critical.
Before we go on to something else, you had mentioned open meetings. We have members who occasionally will appear remotely. Let us say we have three members appearing remotely. And something happens and we lose the forum, then the meeting is done. Now, we do not specify on our agenda that there is remote access available through, you know, X, Y, Z meetings. But if we had remote access for the public and that remote access went down, do we have a valid meeting because the public is now not even?
In my opinion, no. I mean, if you offer that up to them and then it's taken away because somebody, so, so think about whatever it is, the public wants to be involved in that discussion or see it. And that's taken away from them by no fault of their own. Then my view is that that meeting should be postponed. You disagree with that? Okay, okay, okay. So, so I, I mean, so the other thing is, when you talk about your own members, you know, we did create recently a policy at the city council level to try to deal with this particular consideration. Because what we were having is, you know, some type of glitch in the middle of the meeting, right? So one member's there and all of a sudden they fall offline or can't hear. And now the question is, what's happened? And the truth is, if you offer up those, the ability to participate in that meeting remotely and it's taken away from the members, you're not representing, in the case of council, we're dealing with constituents, but you're not able to carry out your duties. So if you're on there and you're thinking, I'm on this by, I don't know, what, YouTube or?
Zoom.
Zoom, okay, so you're on Zoom. And all of a sudden it fails to no fault of your own. You're not able to participate in that meeting anymore. What's the effect? And so we did create a policy that basically said, if you, if you do that, it's your own peril. And so if you fall off, then we're going to treat it as though you left the meeting at some point. And we allow them to come back on, but, but it, it happens that way. If you didn't have a policy, that was what I was struggling with, is we didn't have a policy in place. And, okay, well, when that person drops off, it, it doesn't even matter if it's their fault or your fault. Whatever the reason is, if they drop off and they're out of the meeting, they were told they could participate that way, we need to shut it down as soon as one member leaves and that was a problem. You know, because somebody might be doing it from a hotel and it has, you know, it's, it's for, just for whatever reason electronically, they can't do it or it's interrupted. And now we got to shut down a, you know, a, a large meeting and some action sometimes needs to be taken, as you know, within a particular timeframe. And that was, you know, somewhat onerous. So I think it's a good idea for you to adopt the policy in regard to that. And I'm not going to say that one that the council currently has is perfect because I know there were probably some things that I was looking and then it didn't come out. But something along that lines, if you needed help, that we certainly can help, help you with that. But that's a consideration so you have a way to know that if somebody's on there and they fall off, what is this body going to do? Because if right now you have no rules about that, my view is that that person should, you know, was entitled to expect to be able to be connected up. And if that fails, then the meeting should be shut down because even that one member of the body can't participate and they believed that they could. Now, how much time do I got?
About 10 minutes.
Oh, all right, well, we can zip through the rest of it, I guess. All right, well, you understand the closed session because there's only limited reasons that you can have closed sessions and that's important. But you just follow those rules. They're very, they are very narrow, sometimes they're not properly interpreted. But it is by statute, you guys have been operating long enough, you should understand. but it is by statute, you guys have been operating long enough, you should understand how those things go. The only thing I will reference in regard to that is that it's often considered that you can't take a, you can't make a motion or take a vote in closed session, and that's not true. Many times it does apply that you don't do that, but if you have to take a vote, and if, if the vote is needed in closed session for the very reason that you had the closed session, then it's okay to do that. So here's an example, right? And I'm going to use an easy example, but it could, I'm sure fit within something you're going to do, but city's going to buy a piece of land, and the asking price is $180,000, and somebody says, I think we should start by offering $100,000, but never go up to more than $150,000. We had that conversation and a vote on that in open session, you might as well have had the whole thing in open session, right? There isn't a negotiation. So you can vote in closed session over what's the price. We'll go up to $150,000, we vote, you come out, you have it. Couldn't vote in closed session to set that, you know, highest price or lowest price or whatever it is, you lose the whole purpose. So the rule really is, you can vote in closed session as long as the vote in closed session is necessary in order to further the purpose for going into closed session in first.
Then how does that get noted in the minutes of the entire meeting?
That's on your, that's on your secretary of the body to, to record, that all votes can have to be recorded, and that's on the secretary to do that.
Then would come out of closed session, go back to all purposes of the main meeting? How is what happened in the closed session noted in the minutes of the whole?
The, the, so they would be kept by your clerk, okay? And they don't, didn't get disclosed if they would disclose the purpose until, so those minutes of the closed session themselves are not released until they would no longer be required for closed session. So using my example, the vote is to offer up no more than $150,000 for the piece of property. Once the, so out of that meeting, those minutes have to be kept secret, confidential, but the properties purchased, the day the property's purchased, the reason for keeping them confidential are no longer necessary, so then they would be able to be over in the public.
Who's the best resource for, like, see, and this is in case we have a question in a closed session?
I think Grant.
Okay. That would make sense.
I, I. They would adopt those closed session minutes at a future meeting, so they would become public and part of your official record after that property closing, or situation is no longer closed session matter.
And Jess is, is, you know, not really, how long you been doing?
Three years.
Okay, so what I love about that is it's recent training, and it's just very fresh, and some of those things have been thought about, so she definitely knows her stuff, and I'm always very, if she says something, I usually.
So getting back to public comments, how, how do you tell, does the chair just tell the public, you know, open up, you have five minutes, or does that need to be bylaws or published prior?
That's up to this body, but, I mean, so one way would be, again, you don't necessarily have to have that, this body could pass a rule though, saying, you know, I move for the next future agenda to put in a time restriction on all public comments, you could do that. Otherwise, if you're at a given meeting, it would be up to the chair to do that, but my, you know, recommendation and decor would require you to disclose that before someone starts talking. So that you say, we're going to allow, you know, it's now public comments, it looks like we do have public comments, but I'm going to limit it for five minutes, if you say that, you're controlling it, you are in control of the meeting, and there is. And again, that's one of those things where it's extremely important to recognize the fact that no individual member of this body has any authority to do anything unless the body itself grants the authority for that person to do it, right? So, you know, there are things like special investigations or whatever, those things don't happen just because you're a member of this body, they happen because the body has authorized you to do that. When a meeting is being conducted, you as the chair control the organization of that meeting, the procedure of that meeting, ultimately decide whether things would be, so let's say somebody says, I would like to move an agenda item up or down the agenda or whatever, you, you would be able to decide that that's going to be okay, but you should take a vote on it, because the body is collectively doing it.
Going back to citizen comment, the trend that has been established within the city is citizen comment is at the start of a meeting.
Yeah.
As a body, can we move citizen comment to any place on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we could actually have an end of the meeting? And most of the, well, some people read their comments, some people speak off the cuff, we don't get a whole lot of citizen comment, I can't recall any. Is it a good idea for the purpose of accuracy in records to ask that citizen commentators read from, read their comments and provide a copy to the clerk or to our secretary?
I mean, could you do that? I think you'd have control over it, but remember, why are you doing this? If you make that restriction, you know, burden something, I think it's definitely can be criticized. Can you do it, this body can control how you allow access to citi, to citizens to make comments? I don't think there's anything that, you know, would be unlawful in doing that. Do I think that it would be, you know, perceived as controlling or, you know, designed to do something in particular? Yes, your body is typically, these meetings are typically recorded, right?
Yep.
So when somebody says something, even if they're not here with it, writing and et cetera, you've got a record of what was said. So, I mean, I think justifying that would be likely taken to have been really intended to sort of intimidate or interfere with somebody's ability to do it however they want. Now, the other thing is, and I haven't thought through fully, but keep in mind, right, we've got an element of free speech involved there. So how someone wants to deliver their speech, you, you start to get on the fringes of how much you could control it. So saying it has to be in writing, I, I've never seen that, I think that, you know, and, and here's what I wouldn't like about that, is that normally when governments take actions, the, the bottom threshold is, is the, is your requirement in order to allow somebody to access the government or to free speech, arbitrary, can you explain the reason why you would put that requirement on? And the first one would be, well, so we have a record of what was said, but if we're recording it, that doesn't apply, so I would be worried that trying to control that is sort of controlling free speech, even though it's really just the form, right? Do I think it likely gets by? My argument to defend it would be, it's not content based, we don't care what they're saying, maybe speaking about Nazis or whatever you want, I always go to Nazis, everybody doesn't like, mostly. So.
Both.
I have to say that, I mean, but, yeah, anyway, so that's, you know, that's, that's the thing, is that, okay, if, if it's, if it's not content based, then in theory you could say that, but I have a real hard time thinking, you know, if the rule is there, is it arbitrary to say it's got to be in writing, it's got to be done in a particular way? And then you can imagine that there's other elements of these things, every time we deal with it, which is, what if the person is blind and they don't, or their, their computer illiterate, so they can't type it, or whatever it might be, now you get into other elements of just being fared.
Okay, so we could have speakers, we could have readers, we could have song and dance.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I don't know how the song and dance would work, but yeah, no, I mean, I, I, look, what I, what I would say about that is, right now you could, all right? Could you restrict it? Yes, I'm cautioning, how you do that, if you can justify the control, then it probably is good, as long as it's not content based, right? So, you know, that's, that's the, you know, that's the key. And when I say content, it's not necessarily the media form, it's really what's the subject matter, right? So you could say, everybody's got to do it here with hand puppets, you're going to come up, citizen comments got to be done by hand puppets, might be a problem.
You know, the biggest takeaway for me is we got two great resources in case we have any question at all, in terms of being able to run the meeting, and then Bill's like super versed on Robert's rules, little bit of an expert, I would say. We'll see, compared to the rest of us.
Oh, he's the better one.
Yeah. Yeah, so, no, I just appreciate you guys talking to us, I think it's important.
Yeah, the only other things I had were, you know, conflicts of interest issues discussed, and you guys don't necessarily deal with that the same, because most of the decisions you're dealing in are less likely to come into those things, but, I mean, the operation, understanding how that works, and that the body is made up of, you know, independent members that make their decisions, and each person has a vote, the same as even the chair, so.